I will call the meeting to order here at 7:01 and we'll start with roll call and seating of alternates as necessary. So when I see your name, just please indicate that you are here. Jason Devo.
I am here.
Kirk Scott.
Here.
Rich Gordon.
Here.
And it looks like we are missing Nicole Davidson. Tom Fitting. That's it, right? So we do have two alternates present and I don't believe we need a motion to seat them. Do we, Gary?
No. You just. Exceeded.
Great. So Timothy and Olivia, welcome. I'm glad you're both here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Too bad you can't get up on the dais for the first time. That's, that's nice.
Are there any additions to the agenda tonight? And at this time, are there any public delegations? So public, public delegations are a time when members of the public, I see we have two people on the phone, are invited to speak to the commission about certain matters, items, referrals, or applications that are subject to a decision by the commission. Public hearings or in litigation may not be discussed during delegations. Members of the commission will not directly answer questions or make comments. Anyone here to participate in public delegations? Just gonna give you a second in case you wanted to come off mute. Okay. Great. Now our next agenda item calls for a presentation by attorney Zomarka, who I do not believe is present.
Madam Chair, attorneys marker had a conflict with this evening's meeting, so we scheduled for our February meeting, which you will be at.
Okay. Thank you. Looking forward to that. And on to reports. Do we have any communications?
I have none for the agency at this time.
Okay. Zoning representative, I am not sure that we have a 2022 zoning representative calendar, so that may be something we need to work on. Did anyone attend the last zoning meeting? No. Gary, I think in the past, we've just kind of done them by alphabetical order.
Yeah, we'll put up a calendar together by alphabetical order and we'll send it out. And if there's any conflicts, obviously you'll identify them and then just figure out who can fill in.
All right, great. Thank you.
So we'll get that out as soon as possible, but obviously prior to the next meeting.
Okay, sounds good. And Exercitio Report, welcome, Mr. Weber.
Thank you. I don't have anything specific to talk about tonight. If there's any areas, it's likely to research for you, I can do that. But we're still kind of getting our feet under us and getting done the things we're getting done, but not that specific now to share.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Weber? Okay. Our planning director update, Mr. Gashel.
I'll just comment on the Route 161 quarter study. I think I did mention to you last time, we were assigned a project number by the state. The good news is that project is starting to move forward. I'm reached out to the first selectman. We're discussing about putting a steering committee together to help steer that project along with the cog. So Kate Ratan from the Southeast Kentucky Council of Governments had recommended a number of folks, obviously from planning, zoning, public safety. For instance, so we're going to put that subcommittee together. It won't be huge, obviously, but it would be a number of people from across the town to help, help guide that study. So I'm excited to see that get going. The other news there is we have our grant award for the Affordable Housing Plan. I guess I can speak about that as we move forward, get to the RFP. That's all I have for, for now.
Awesome. Thank you. Onto subcommittees, we attempted to have a P O C D meeting prior to this planning commission meeting, but there was a bit of a mix up with the distribution list on the agenda and some technical difficulties. So we did not actually, we did not have a quorum to hold the meeting. So that said, I just wanted to have a bit of discussion, just some housekeeping during this meeting, so we can not get held up and continue moving forward. We spoke, our last meeting was in September for the plan of conservation and development, and at that time, we had crystallized the list of recommendations that we were going to provide and possibly did provide to the Board of Selectmen as far as projects initiatives in the plan of conservation and development that would be appropriate for American Rescue Plan funds. A lot's happened since September. We have a lot of new people and some new procedures around the decisions regarding distributions of those funds. So we're going to go ahead and resend that communication in with the same recommendations. And the other item of any, anything else on that, Gary?
You just add that I spoke with Sandy today. She told me she advised me to resend the letter if we had sent it, if we hadn't sent it, just to send it up. That said, in speaking with the first selectman, he's putting together a committee to talk and look at those things specifically. So this letter will go to them. They'll be able to use that as a, as a, you know, springboard place to start anyway. So I hope.
Me too. The other item of business that we had kind of hoped to get done on the P O C D subcommittee meeting tonight was just kind of a 2022 meeting schedule plan. So I think at this committee, we can set, maybe let's try to do it again next month if we determine at the commission level, can we just, I don't think we need a motion for that either, to just set the date for the next subcommittee meeting?
No, I don't think you need a motion. I think you just need a consensus.
So of the members here would 6:30 before our February regular meeting, which I believe is February 8th? Does that work for everyone?
Yes.
Great. I like all those thumbs as consensus. So we'll plan on 6:30 February 8th and make sure that the agenda makes it to everyone. Thank you for that. Chairman's report, I don't have anything, but just wanted to say thank you for everyone who attended the Freedom of Information Act training that we had earlier this month. I got a lot out of it and I hope that you all did too, and just wanted to express my thanks back to the town for making that available to us. It's something that we, I don't know that we, we have been trained on it since I have been a part of the commission and it was very valuable for me. So thank you for providing that resource and thank you to everyone who attended. Okay, we are flying. Approval of the minutes is the next item on the agenda. Do I hear a motion for approval of our special meeting minutes from January 11?
I just noticed a couple of typos under the motion in the fourth to last paragraph. The change versus the versus the.
Think, do we need to put a motion up then discuss it?
Do you have any, do we need a, I don't know?
Yeah, you have a motion and discussion.
Rich, do you?
I'd like to make a motion.
So who do the motion first and then, or just note the typo.
I would make a motion first and then have discussion.
Okay, so we had a motion to approve the minutes.
Seconds.
Any discussion, Rich?
Yeah, I just, that's a couple of typos I noticed. Under the fourth to last paragraph under the motion to change versus the versus, versus.
Which page?
The fourth to last paragraph under the motion. The page, let me see. Sorry, let's see. Would be. Window page three, I'm sorry, the second, second paragraph from page three. Alternative versus to versus maintaining a 200. Says five, so it should be foot.
Okay, I got that.
Yeah, thanks.
Any other discussion on the minutes? So now I believe we need to move to approved as amended.
We should move to, to approve as amended, correct?
Do you want to make that motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve as amended.
Any seconds?
Second.
Thank you. I'll do a roll call vote for whose benefit and those who may not have video. Timothy, Lud, Luduserd, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you can call me Tim.
Tim, okay, I'm just going by what's on. So Tim Reducer.
Yes.
Rich Gordon.
Yes.
Olivia Fairchild.
Yes.
Kirk Scott.
Hi.
Jason Devo.
Yes.
And Michelle Williams, I, so minutes are approved as amended. Thank you all. We do not have public hearings or subdivisions pending tonight, so that takes us right into zoning referrals. Gary.
We have some time with this one as the public hearing is not scheduled until March 3rd. So we can start looking at this. I did ask Jen to put on this agenda versus the next one where I was hoping we could render a decision then. But this is a request of AMG Pub 2, to, for text amendment, to amend the distance between drive-through facilities within the CA district. Essentially, they, they want to put a drive-through in but are unable to based on their current locations too close to the nearest drive-through, so they want to amend that and take a look at it. So we'll be able to take a look, take a look at the P O C D. Do our homework and then we reconvene next month. Render decision.
Fantastic. Did anybody have any questions looking through the materials that maybe would require any research or additional information that we need to be collected between now and our February 8th meeting?
Well, I noticed that this AMG pub is, pub is an alcoholic establishment and I saw that restaurants are included in the, the group that can be approved for this drive-through. Is a pub a restaurant or is a pub like a bar or is it just the pub is the name of the ownership entity? In this case, I believe AMG Pub is, is the LLC name. That's their business name. I'm not sure exactly the retail use that wants the drive-through, but nonetheless, it's a drive-through. I think they all operate relatively similarly. There's a stacking area where for those vehicles and there's some traffic circulation pattern concerns that we typically look at. So keeping that in mind.
Okay. Did you say there was a public hearing scheduled for March 3rd?
Yes, the zoning commission has a public hearing scheduled for that matter on March 3rd, so we have until then to get our comments into their record.
Okay. Thanks.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you. And thanks especially for the, making sure we have a bunch of time on this. Really appreciate that. I don't believe we have any municipal referrals today, but we do have some old business on the Affordable Housing Plan 2022 update. Thank you for sending along the RFP and our materials. I hope everybody got a chance to take a look at that. Do you want to kind of give us a status update?
Yeah, I think it's pretty straightforward. As most of you know, we've been awarded grant from the Department of Housing for $15,000 to assist us with preparing and our update to our Affordable Housing Plan. I did send out the RFP. It's pretty straightforward. It just goes through some general information of what we're expecting. And then a scope of services, I think was pretty detailed. I don't know if I missed anything there, but I think it's pretty comprehensive, looking for, you know, both, you know, community analysis, housing analysis, gap analysis. And then obviously strategies that, that we can implement. Those are things that probably will end up in the P O C D at, at some point. And then obviously we're looking for community outreach where the consultant will conduct, at least I'm putting in two public outreach meetings. I think we're looking at the timeframe, we have until October before the grant runs out and we have to get our deliverables in. So using October 1 as a conservative date, that's the timeframe in which we're working in. I think it's, it's doable. We do have the ability to request extension time if needed, so long as it's requested 90 days prior to the expiration, if you will, of the grant or the due date. So yes, October 31st, 2022 is the period of the award. So our deliveries will be due by then. So if we need extension time, 90 days prior to that, we can request it. Which isn't all that far away, but that said, I wanted to get this RFP out so that the commission could take a look at it. If you're in agreement with it, I'll be more than happy to post it publicly and get it out to the community so that you can start getting some proposals and get moving forward on, on developing the plans.
Yeah, I'd like to have kind of two discussions back to back here, but the first being on the RFP. I thought it looked great, was comprehensive, addressed what we needed. Did anybody else have any feedback on the RFP? Are you comfortable with that going out? Yeah, okay, great. Thank you, Gary, and.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Just the town of Trumbull is listed under the town, I guess. Change these lines, I guess.
Which page?
Let me see. Page six, eight, six, under under insurance. Right.
Okay, I'll go through that whole paragraph.
Yeah, I think it says conflict of interest. This is Tom Trumble.
As you can see, Trumble helped me with this.
Your town options is town of Trumbull's listed.
There's a number spots here. Anything else, Rich?
You know, there's three spots that I noticed, thanks.
I have five, just looking at, at that. So I'll take a look through, make sure that everything is, the paragraph conflict of interest, I found that one as well.
Right.
Okay. If there's nothing else, I'll, I'll just proofread it again before it goes out. I'll have another set of eyes in the office take a look as well.
Excellent. I'm kind of the second item related to the plan update that I wanted to discuss was, I would like to create a subcommittee to assist the consultants, whoever is brought on board and town staff with the development of the plan. I think it's something that is really important that we have a lot of consensus on from various boards and commissions throughout the town. So what I, what I was hoping that we could do with this commission's okay is this is another document like the Plan of Conservation and Development where it's kind of, you know, born out of this commission but touches a lot of other ones. So I was hoping that we could set up a subcommittee with members of the planning commission, member or members of the planning commission, and then also put out some letters to see if we have any interest from Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, zoning, the assessor's office, any other identified stakeholders that could be useful and we want to make sure that their opinions and knowledge is reflected in the plan. Looking for some thoughts on that approach as a whole and/or volunteers from this commission to work with Gary to get that started.
I volunteer for the commission or subcommittee.
Thank you, Jason.
Tom and Nicole are not here. Is that true?
That's correct.
Maybe, maybe one or both of those or some of the junior or some of the, you know, more, the newer folks, if they would want to get involved, this would be a good thing to get their feet wet and start affecting policy. So I'd be willing to volunteer as well, but I would also encourage some of the newer members to get involved as well. So you can count me in.
All right, great. And I think you're spot on. It would be great if some of the new members want to do it. If you don't want to commit tonight, that is okay. You can think on it and get in touch with myself, Gary, Kirk, Jason. I'm going to sit this one out from a subcommittee standpoint and keep my focus on plan of conservation and development, but obviously here to help as needed.
I have a question about that.
Sure.
Alternates able to be on the committee? Okay, okay, I will do it.
Great. All right. Gary, do you have what you need from us at this point?
I do. I just would need to hear back from Nicole and Tom if they have any interest there. But otherwise, I think with Jason, Kirk and Olivia, that we can, we can certainly move forward with the subcommittee. I, I guess my next question would be, when would we want to host our first meeting? And that may be prior to actually, you know, the selection of a consultant. So I'm thinking sometime early next month. I know we have, I have a meeting both the first and second week of February. Either of those still work for me. Later in the week, we can maybe do it Thursday. We're going to find some meeting space. And just make sure there's no room conflicts. But that said, considering the circumstances with COVID, we can probably just as be as easily over zoom. If you would agree. So if that's the case, then we can meet just about anytime that I'm available. Did you say early on a Thursday, like the 10th, maybe? That would work as long as there's, you know, and the, the next question is, do we want to meet in person? You know, or over zoom?
I think Zoom is okay. I mean, that's, that's an easy thing. It's a lot easier to get everybody together. We don't have to worry about a room and all the other issues. I think, I think Zoom works for me. I don't know. I won't speak for everybody though.
Okay, but the, the 10th would work. Or the third, either, either or.
I'm.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with either of those.
One better for you or Jason?
I'm sorry. You said the 10th or?
The, the third or the 10th? Is one better for you?
I prefer the 10th, but they're, they're both okay.
Okay. When we go for the 10th of 6:30, 7?
Go with 6:30.
All right. I'll put an agenda out and then we can set a calendar for the year. We'll be done. Great.
Awesome.
Calling our sub.
Because we can call it the Affordable Housing Plan 2022 Update Committee.
Scotty, Scotty, I was going to.
Original.
Use an acronym if you want.
Maybe that can be your first order of business.
All right, start thinking of cool names.
All right, thanks all. And thanks, Gary, for your work, not only on the RFP but on securing the grant. That's a really big help. We're all very familiar with what a lift and update like this can be. And thank you for finding the grant and the successful application.
We'll wait until we get our deliverables in before we call it successful.
Okay. Successful application and obtaining the, the funding.
Thank you.
All right, new business subdivision regulation revisions. I know we've been wanting to tackle this one for a while, so I want you to give me the floor again.
Yeah, so being that there's nothing pending, I think this is a great time in a new year, it's early on to take a look at this. And I went through my regulations from the last 10 years and the notes that I've had in them, and I've got, you know, little notes all the way from section four to section nine primarily. And there's a few typos, things to that nature. Those are minor, but more substantive changes, we've made notes and wanting to change the notice for public hearings, to include the date and times of those public hearings. Other things like I looked at the conditional approval. Now that's something that the commission doesn't do much of, but nonetheless, I, I felt that after reading the language there, it's, it's not as clear as it probably could be. I find it confusing myself, so I think that might be something we're taking a look at. Section 49 speaks about incomplete applications and how that relates to things like the plans and the requirements that have to, that have to be submitted, such as the sanitation report, water supply report. And those essentially may help make a complete application. So I want to take a closer look at that so that as, as applications come in, I've noticed it's kind of piecemeal together. It takes the entire statutory time before all of the parts and components are submitted. I think that's, it's not really a good use of the commission's time. I, I think we could be more efficient if the application was complete and whole to begin with, before the commission has to render a decision, you know, three months later that it's incomplete. Going on, things like the archaeological survey, that is something, you know, one of the concerns that I've heard about that and it's from the developer side is while it is required and there's no really, nobody's getting any heartburn over having to provide one, it's when they have to provide it as part of the subdivision process application process. So it's, they're, they're doling out money that they may end up with a denial. And at the end of the day, statutorily, if there are archaeological artifacts found, they have to be recovered before they can actually build on the site. But that's the extent of it, is that the archaeological survey identifies them and then says, hey, they're just there. You approve the development, they have to go in and recover. You approve the development, they have to go in and recover them. So the question is, could that be something more like a condition of approval that those studies be conducted after? I don't know. Those are things to consider. Other things, a lot design specifications under section 62 regarding access, the number of lots on a private drive. What I've noticed is under these regulations, we haven't had too many private drives. We had a lot of, I shouldn't say that. We have a lot of private driveways, not private roads. So we had a lot of driveways with three lots on them. Obviously, the regs are pretty clear. Anything over three lots, you've got to bump up the state that the standards increase. So there's more, you know, to do on the developer's end. So I think that's why we're not seeing four or five lots in that regard. Street design layout, I want to ensure that we're clear on the road length, the maximum road length. I think there's a couple of inconsistencies in the regs. We still refer to cluster regulations, which are really no longer existent. Zoning wise, we went over to the Conservation Development Design Regulation. And they omitted the cluster reg out of the zoning reg so that's, that's, I think, so we need to, I think, make some corrections in ours regarding that. Section 618 on surety. This is the bonding of public improvements. I had previously done a bunch of work with Ed O'Connell. We actually have drafts of that section. So that's one section we won't have to actually really redevelop because it's already been done. We just need to get it in front of the commission to massage and approve basically. I can keep going on, street right of ways, again, talking about block length and street length. Would like to clarify that. And then the appendices, talking with the town engineer, you and I both would like to update them with better details. We, the details are kind of antiquated. They're, they're just, they're older, they're harder to read. And he has much better clearer details that are much more legible. I'd also say they're more up to date and implement more low impact development standard design. So those are the things that we'd like to add in terms of the appendices. His discussion with me was he was thinking if we did something like a separate manual that would have all of those standards for road design in separate from the planet, but from the subdivision regs. I'm not opposed to that, but I did indicate that I still think that they have to be in the regulation in order for us to require it. So just because if it's a guidance document, it holds very, you know, it holds less weight than if it's an actual regulation. So that's something we can run by council. But as we get going with these changes, I mean, there's a lot here to tackle. And I'm more than happy to just chip away at it and bring it each section in front of you to the commission. One other thought I had is, as I, as we chip away at this, if we can just task a couple of members, I mean, you don't have to necessarily have a subcommittee to tackle this. You can, if you'd like, but if you're just tasking a couple of members with looking at these sections and working with me to develop them and then have discussion in front of the commission. We could do something like that. I don't know. That might be an easier lift. Obviously, with the subcommittee, we had to ensure that we make minutes and things like that post agendas. So that covers most of the regs and the changes that I've kind of noticed and thought areas that need some attention.
That sounds good. I think also I know that during the P O C D revision process, we had kind of made a bunch of notes on those. If so, what I would like is in the next, you know, weeks, if anybody has thoughts on things that have come up in your time here that you noticed reading through, if you could just send those right to Gary individually so that they kind of become part of this inclusive list of things to look at. And then I do agree that we probably don't, we're a little subcommittee full at this time. So maybe as you start chipping away, you know, and keeping us updated, if there are particular sections of interest that pop up for any of us, we can hop in and help out with those. How does everyone else feel about that?
Well, they, all the items would come for discussion and vote by the committee anyway, right? I mean, that's, is that true?
Every, everything would have to come before the whole commission for discussion if there's no subcommittee.
Right. And then would we vote on it or is that just we?
I think as we handle each section, we probably would just maybe my intention would be to just this section's chapter one's done, we set it aside, we get all the changes together. You hold one public hearing and do one full overhaul of the regulations. Or you can do it incrementally. We could do that as well. We would just be holding maybe several public hearings throughout the year to do it that way.
Other thoughts and questions?
So the actual document that would get a public hearing would be the final product and nothing would actually go into effect until we had the public hearing and then it was accepted. Is that the procedural gist of it? So to be accepted as, as the, as the official document? Who, who votes on it and is it our commission or does it go to the selectmen or what happens there?
Just this commission, your regulations. So you'd be holding a public hearing anytime you change those regulations. Obviously, upon conclusion of the public hearing, you, the commission votes. They vote to approve the changes, then those changes will take effect. It's always recommended you set an effective date. Usually that's 15 days after the public data publication in the paper. Because that's the appeal period that if someone felt aggrieved, they could file an appeal. With that, once, once the effective, the legal ad runs and the effective date passes, the regulation is that effective.
So, so maybe what is, what is everybody else feel about maybe doing something where we have a draft? And we like discuss items that get changed in the draft. And then as we go along and we finish the changes that we feel like we like in our draft, then, you know, we could conclude that knowing it's just a draft. And then that would be what we would present as a document for public hearing and then final vote and whatever. That's just a, a an idea. So I'll throw that back at you guys and see if that's something you find to be like a good workflow.
That's kind of what I was thinking already, that as these sections are getting updated, Gary's bringing them to us for discussion. And then we form consensus, you know, and market kind of finished, but save them all for the public hearing as a group so that we're not having to have a public hearing on each section as it gets updated. Tim, sorry, I saw you go off mute.
Oh, no, that's just agreeing. Sounds good.
Yeah.
Jason's good.
Great, that works.
All right, so will, in the meantime, send you any thoughts that we have as individuals? Just other things we've, I'm sure Rich will find us a few typos.
Yeah, I mean, even just as you drive around town, I mean, that's probably the best way to do it. Drive around town, drive through the subdivisions, check out the neighborhoods, see which ones are working well, which ones aren't, which ones you like. I mean, obviously, everyone has a different opinion of what they feel is better or worse. But that said, I know that there's, you know, subdivisions and a good example is a one off of Fair Haven. It, it, because the zone was in our 10, I believe, or our 12. They were allowed to subdivide, you know, do two family housing, permitted use by right. They subdivided out five lots. That's 10 units. So easily quickly doubled. And then if you just take a look at that end of the street, I mean, for what it is, it fits in there, but it's, it's kind of a slightly out of character with the single family neighborhood down the rest of the street. So it's, you know, think about those things and just as you think about the subdivision regulations. And because that's kind of what that created, at the same time, I do recall with that same development, one of the proposals that they came in in order to meet the regs was they had to have two driveways, which I believe the approved plan shows. And then they gave themselves an easement up the middle of both of those, so they could just put one driveway. Kind of crazy, you know, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense. But, you know, there was a way around the regulation that allowed one driveway. And we're, for a period of time during review of that application, I was very concerned we'd end up with two driveways and just twice as much asphalt. So, you know, trying to balance those, you know, environmental concerns with quality development and yeah, so just keep that in mind as you go around town and then we'll, we'll have some more discussions. Be great. Thank you.
Yeah, or things that have, what I'm thinking about is things that have tripped us up in applications over the last couple of years where more clarity would have been helpful for all of us. So as you look through your notes from all meetings, think about kind of those things too. All right. Thank you all for the discussion on that. We have no further business. If anyone wants to
I'd like to bring back before the commission's attention.
Are they agenda items? So Jason?
No.
So can procedurally, how does that work? Does that fit on a new business?
You, you
I don't want to trip us up here because we do need to stick to the agenda.
You need a motion to add something to the agenda, but I think that was at the beginning of the agenda. I mean, you can still theoretically do it with a motion, but a motion has to pass, though.
It's procedural stuff. I'll just, I think I can just email you and ask.
Okay, and we can get it on for the eighth if it can wait and if it does need to be discussed by the commission.
Sure thing.
Thanks for understanding. I just want to make sure that we stay transparent to the people we serve. With that, would anyone like to move to adjourn?
To move, Kirk Scott.
Thank you, Kirk. No one, one second?
Seconded.
All right. Thank you, Jason. All in favor, Michelle Williams, I, Tim?
Hi.
Rich?
Hi.
Olivia?
Hi.
Kirk?
Hi.
Jason?
Hi, yes.
Fantastic. Thank you all. Really appreciate your time tonight.